That Friday pickup and the holiday does happen on Monday. And I checked the calendar and this year, Christmas and New Years in 21 will again fall on both Fridays. So we won't think about it until next Christmas, but Friday garbage and recycling pickup will happen on the Monday following the holiday. And there's still a little bit of concern over the bumpy Oswego Road, Oswego Road, sorry, but I believe everything else is calm.
Very good. Yeah, if for general public Oswego, the project is completed for the winter, but it is not complete. So the stormwater work still needs to be done, but the, if I recall correctly, I believe the sanitary sewer work is done, but the stormwater still needs to, and that's why it's not have a finished coat of pavement on it. Jackie, thank you. Sixth Ward, Bill Carpenter.
Yes, Happy New Year, everybody. Couple of weeks ago, we had that torrential rain where Taft Noga River rose quite high. And I spoke about this a couple of weeks ago, a couple of meetings ago about talking with Nick and I just talked with Brian a little bit about getting some relief on the river because it's eroding the riverbanks down there. And you know, years to come, we're going to have some serious issues down there. I know one of my friends is on the river. He has a pool and he put a lot of money in his pool and he's losing his pool. So as to that river carrying away trees and it's slowly, slowly eroding everything. He's done as much mitigation as he can. And we gotta, I think just hopefully get some grant money or do something as to we can lessen the erosion down there. It's pretty bad, especially when that river really raises, gets a high. The other issue I had is a couple of weeks ago, there was a, there were some rocks that were dropped out of a pickup truck, actually a construction vehicle on 13 from the bridge, McDonald's, all the way down Morningside. And I had drove out there and it was just huge rocks that a construction company dropped. And I talked to Paul Sandy and Nick, Nick cleaned it up. He didn't have to do that. It was a DOT issue. DOT did come out, but it was an unsecured load and Paul Sandy is currently working on that with the state police as to safety wise with that truck. It's a very serious issue. Somebody could have got hurt, but when I was driving out there, it was pretty bad. But it was cleaned up by Nick and he didn't have to do that. It was actually a DOT. He should have cleaned it up, but they didn't really do a good job. So Nick helped out, his crew helped out above and beyond again with Nick and his crew. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Bill. Seventh Ward, Troy Beckwith.
I'm quiet in the seventh.
Thank you, Troy. Eighth Ward, Tom Michaels.
Hey, Happy New Year, everyone. I just want to point out there was some fireworks at night, but fortunately it didn't come from the city, but some people did kind of enjoy the noise at midnight and some didn't. Also, I also had some calls regarding how we, how the city is going to roll off the vaccination when it comes about. And I'm thinking that maybe we can piggyback this discussion on item seven and see how we're going to work with the county to coordinate this effort. I can't tell you how many calls I've received in the past week, once they heard that there was a vaccine out there in the Cortland area, but they are going to the care centers at this point. So let's see if we can maybe add this to the discussion on item seven. Other than that, you know, I think everybody was prepared for the big storm. I haven't had any complaints regarding sidewalks or whatso or whatnot. And I think for the most part that didn't went smoothly except for the operation of my snowboard, but I did get that fixed in time. So other than that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Tom. That concludes the ward reports. Now moving on to the mayor's report. I'll keep it short, wishing everybody a Happy New Year. I hope the holiday season was good for you and hopefully you're a little bit more into your routine than I am. I'm still getting there. And I'll reiterate what we've already heard, the importance of shoveling, not just your own, but if you're able to, if you see neighbors that might be struggling with clearing the snow, be neighborly, help them out a little bit because it will really benefit everyone. Echoing the comments earlier about the rain and then the snowmelt, right after the Christmas holiday, we really were seeing, I believe on Christmas and into the next day, high waters and there were some issues in various communities. We are fortunate though, if you look around, we did not experience any flooding within the city limits. And that's a testament to the infrastructure work that has been done by our Public Works Department over the last 10, 20, close to 30 years. I know that Chris and his crew, by expanding culverts and bridges, making them wider so more water can pass through all the way from the waterworks towards the Taft Noga, that's had a very positive effect right in the heart of the city. And these projects, it's good when we're not talking about them because it means they worked, but I wanted to make sure that we recognize the fact that these projects have really done well for us. And going forward, it is a new year. We do still have some of the same challenges though, and we want people to still remember what you need to do. And when we talk later with regard to COVID-19 and what is happening in the community vaccinations, it's nice to see a potential finish line. We're not quite there yet though. So I encourage everybody to keep doing what they're supposed to and we'll talk more about that towards the end. But right now I'd like to move on to a proclamation about mentoring month. And I've asked Mindy Gardner, who works with Bridges for Kids at the YWCA, which is a mentoring program. Mindy, I'd like to give you a couple of minutes, if you would, to please talk a little bit about mentoring in Cortland.
Sure. So as Brian said, I am Mindy Gardner. I'm the director of mentoring over at the YWCA in Cortland. To give you a little background about Bridges for Kids, it's our mentoring program geared for kids ages five to 12. And it's been going on in Cortland for about 40 years, just over 40 years, actually. We just celebrated 40 years of service to the local area. It provides local youth with a mentor to help them become more successful despite the many factors that hinder growth and success with some of our youth. Before the COVID-19 pandemic, mentors were matched with the youth and they were asked to spend about two to three hours with them weekly. They could do activities like take them to the park, they could go to museums, they could just hang out, lots of them would cook together, they were able to go to the Y and do something together, puzzle or some sort of activity. Since the pandemic has happened, we've adapted and we've created a safe and joyful mentoring program, which includes a pen pal program. This, what this did is included the college students and some local residents who will write weekly letters to the students that are in the program and the kids write back. And then this is a form of mentoring during this time when we just are so uncertain about what's going on and who's safe to be around and everything like that. It provided that mentoring to continue on and to grow, actually. It has grown more than the other mentoring program was. So this is really exciting. The program is always open to all youth, no matter what their background is. They just have to be between the ages of five and 12. As you know, like with the mentoring and the pen pal, five-year-olds are a little young. So we haven't paired any of the younger kids up with the pen pal program, but if we do, we will encourage them to draw pictures to one another just to bring some sort of joy to the younger kids. The program is open to residents here in Cortland County and also to the college students. Typically, we have about a 50/50 split right now about residents who are participating and college students who are. With the pen pal program, the college students really kind of took off and a lot of them were secluded, you know, sitting up in the college and not able to do much in our community. And they were feeling lonely, so they really took the chance on this pen pal program, which was exciting to, as you know, many of them don't know the area, they come as freshmen or they've been here for three years and they really haven't explored much. So they were excited to be part of our community. At the time when much of our focus is on what divides us in our country, many studies are showing that there is something that most Americans agree on, and that is that mentoring relationships are a powerful tool for connection and they're critical to our community and our country's future. Americans are overwhelmingly crossing racial, economic, and other bridges to mentor young people outside of their families. Currently, the Bridges for Kids program here in the county has over 100 children enrolled. 30 of them are still meeting with their in-person mentor that they had before COVID. Some of them met throughout the early stages because it was their only contact of a transportation. It was the only person that was able to get them their resources from school. Many mentors are the ones that got them the free food. They weren't able to get there, so the mentors are the ones who stacked up and were able to provide that service for the kids. So about 30 of them are still meeting in person and have included them in their little family bubble. And then about 30 of them are matched up with pen pals right now. And that is a new program that started back in October. So it's been going on for a couple of months and we've been getting a lot of positive reviews. We're happy to include anyone from the community who's ready to be a pen pal or match them up with a child once it's COVID safe. If you would like to participate in the program, you can call the YWCA at 607-753-9651. Again, the number 607-753-9651. Or you can email me, the director, at bridges@cortlandywca.org.
Very good. Thank you so much, Mindy. As you know, YWCA provides mentoring program, access to independence does as well. And I'd be remiss if I didn't mention how our Youth Bureau has a youth center. We've got people who are excellent role models and it's the way that we treat our kids and the resources that we have, really one of the many things that make great Cortland a great place to raise a family. So Mindy, thank you for being here and expanding on what you're doing in these challenging times and still providing services for kids that can use a mentor. So in terms of the need, I have a proclamation here that I'd like to read. So whereas the goal is of National Mentoring Month, to raise awareness of mentoring, recruit individuals to mentor, and encourage organizations to engage and integrate quality in mentoring into their efforts. A mentor, what is a mentor? A caring, consistent presence, someone who devotes time to a young person to help that person discover their personal strength and achieve their potential through a structured and trusting relationship. And whereas mentoring programs have shown to be effective in combating school violence and discipline problems, substance abuse, incarceration, and truancy. And research shows that young people who are at risk for not completing high school, who had a mentor, were 55% more likely to be enrolled in college, 81% more likely to report participating regularly in sports or extracurriculars, and more than twice as likely to say that they held a leadership position in a club or sports team, and 78% more likely to volunteer regularly in their communities. And whereas youth development experts agree that mentoring is critical to the social, emotional, and cognitive development of youth, helping them navigate the path to adulthood more safely. And all the above listed benefits serve to link youth to economic opportunity while also strengthening the fiber of our communities. And despite these benefits, one in three youths will reach age 19 without a mentor in their life. And this constitutes a mentoring gap that demonstrates a need for collaboration and resources. And in Cortland County, as you heard, there are children on waiting lists, waiting for adult mentors. So I will proclaim the month of January as National Mentoring Month in Cortland. And I urge residents that if you're interested in becoming involved and engaged, recognize our current volunteers and staff, acknowledge the benefits of mentoring, and make a phone call and see if you have an interest, if you are able to have that connection with an individual and help a youth experience more success and greater growth due to your relationship. So that's the proclamation on Mentoring Month. And it's great to hear that even in challenging times, Mindy, you found ways to still reach out and connect people to people. Very good. Next up, Minutes, approval of her minutes from our last meeting, which was way back, December 15th. Do I have a motion to consider said minutes? And I'm looking, I see Bill Carpenter, second John Bennett discussion. Any issues or concerns, potential notifications to the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor of filing the minutes as is. Council members, please make sure your microphones are on. Let's give a verbal aye and a wave.
Aye.
Aye.
And any opposed to filing the minutes as is? Very good. File them away. Ladies and gentlemen, oh, Mr. Van Doncel.
I ask that you add an agenda item regarding the county agreement about the Abbott machines. You could do that to the agenda.
Very good. With council approval, actually that'll fit in really well with number of seven, make it number eight. Counsel, any concerns? Abbott machines are the rapid testing machines for COVID. Any issues or are we okay with that?
Okay.
I'm okay with adding it.
Very good.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Number one on our agenda, we have with us Dr. Mary Canita Coville from SUNY Cortland. And Dr. Coville was contacted by Chief Catalano. And this is old news for people on council, but it bears worth repeating. Back in, I believe it was 2014, chief collaborated with Richard Kendrick up at the college and did a survey from the community about perception of law enforcement, specifically the city police department. And we, chief believed that it was a good idea to do the same thing again this year. We had some calls and conversations led us to Mary, who's a new faculty member at SUNY Cortland. And without further ado, Dr. Canita Coville, thank you for joining us this evening.
Well, thank you for having me. I always appreciate as a professor, the ability to have us on our stage. So it's been about a month since we have had students face to face or over Zoom. So I'm dying for a PowerPoint, so I'm going to subject you to that in just a moment. So it says that host has disabled screen sharing, which is okay. I can go without that.
I actually, I switched you to being the host.
Oh, boy. That's a dangerous thing. All right. So.
Buckle up.
Okay. So it is, let's see, let's, nope. Okay. So as I allow for this to happen, apparently, of course, now it is not allowing, the computer is not allowing me to do so, of course, just because I'm trying to in front of you all. So here we go.
There it is.
All right. So I'm going to pull this up. So I apologize for being this little Oz box in the corner here, but I wanted to give you some overview of the survey that we're conducting. And Mayor Tobin gave you a brief intro into this. I wanted to go a little bit more in depth to answer any questions that you may have and hopefully give you some additional background. So as Brian said, I am a new faculty at SUNY Cortland. However, I've been around for a while. Coming back to Cortland is like coming home. I have many professional and personal connections in the area. So I am an assistant professor in the sociology anthropology department. My appointment is for the criminology program where I teach policing and corrections. And I'm a faculty associate in Africana Studies Department. So as I said, I'll go over a little bit about the survey, the research methodology that I'm using, the current status of the survey, and then answer any questions. If there's something that comes up along the way, please feel welcome to have a conversation with me. You don't have to wait till the end, just go ahead and interrupt me. So as many of you may know, the survey was created in response to the executive order 203, which is an order by Governor Cuomo to have local law enforcement agencies look at their policies and procedures related to race-based issues and also work to foster trust in the community. So the survey that I've worked with chief and mayor on creating has been branched from existing surveys to adapt to what we felt Cortland needed to talk about. So some of the questions on the survey look at quality of life, safety, resident perceptions of the police department, interactions with officers, and then understanding that for folks who have had traditionally marginalized experiences, these surveys may not capture their experiences. So there is some space that offers the ability for folks to share any additional information that they would like to or expand upon things that we didn't touch on. So the mayor and the chief contacted me in the end of August and began crafting the survey. At that time, once the survey was complete, after some back and forth, I had to go through our institutional review board process, which is a board at the college that looks at any type of research for methodological accuracy and ethical direction. So once that was approved, once the survey letters were printed, they were mailed out on December 1st. I'll get into the specifics of the survey in the next slide, but we asked for a return date of December 31st. And now we, I will be mailing out tomorrow after this meeting, a reminder to households that were selected to complete the survey. If they have not, with a requested return date of January 22nd. And at that time, I will do the data analysis and compile the report by mid-February so that chief and mayor are able to use that in their final report, which is due in the beginning of April. So the survey uses a cross-sectional design. Given the time constraints and budget constraints as well, we decided to go with a cross-sectional design, which takes a representative sample of the population. And I did anonymous responses so that folks could, were able to speak their minds as they felt comfortable. So given all the statistical, or the statistical equations to develop how many responses we would need, in order to have a confidence level of 95% with a margin of error of plus or minus 5%, we need 377 responses, given the population size. So we've mailed out 750. Right now, we're just over 200. And I think with a postcard reminder and with some help, which I'm going to ask for at the end, that we will get to that level without a problem. It's also post-holidays, so folks are feeling, hopefully, like they have a bit more time to do this. So the survey letter that was mailed asked selected households to go online and complete an electronic version of the survey. If folks would prefer or needed a hard copy of the survey, there is also information for them to contact me to get a hard copy free of charge, of course. And in addition to having contact information for me, the mailing, the postcard mailer that will be sent out tomorrow has the contact information for the front desk for chief so that if folks are wondering if this is a legitimate thing or folks are fishing for information as a police scam, they can dispel any of those doubts by contacting them. So this is the example of the postcard reminder that will go out tomorrow. As you see, I've removed the link so that we can have that representative sample that helps to reduce any bias that might be there by doing this. One of the things that I ask of you all is if you can get the word out about this so that folks do understand that it is something important, that it's something legitimate, and that we would really appreciate anyone who has received this to give that feedback. One of the things that's also happening, which I am very pleased about, is the listening sessions that chief and mayor have held. And these listening sessions provide additional opportunity for folks who didn't receive a letter to also voice those concerns or voice those praises or air their whatever. And I believe mayor is keeping track of those comments so that they can be compiled as well in the report and we can address anything at that point as well. So I'm going to stop sharing now and open it up to any questions that you may have of me, any comments.
I'll throw one out there because I've had a couple of people ask about their desire to do the survey, which I appreciate and told people, we've had the public forums and people can call in, but if you can just reiterate why it's a specific segment and why we're not just taking people who may want to fill it out?
Sure. So if this were a survey that were open to all residents, then we would, it would be a census survey and you would have to follow certain guidelines in order to make sure that you were getting a true representation of the folks in Cortland and not just the loudest voices. And so we need to, so that is why we are following this particular methodology with the cross-sectional design, randomly selecting households. The probability sampling means that all households have an equal opportunity of being selected in that. I use the tax assessments to go through and a random generator in order to pick the households. The mailings to the households have no names attached to them, so it's addressed to the household and it is set, so the survey is set, so one person per household is able to do that survey. So it's really meant to really just, you know, take a grab of a section of Cortland and understand then how you would infer that to the larger population.
Very good. Counsel, any questions? Katie Solomon.
I was wondering if you could tell the public how you chose or give a sample of the questions that you asked on the survey or give them an idea of how you selected the questions you've put on the survey.
Sure. So after this time period is closed, I would be more than happy to share more widely the survey. I would prefer not to do so at this moment because as folks are taking that and really attempting as much as possible to reduce any bias that might happen. But the questions, so we began by digging through questions that were already existing within surveys that have been conducted in similar areas. Chief Catalano shared the International Association of Chiefs of Police had a few that they had used or other departments and communities had used in the past. And then I took my previous work in looking at community research and doing ethnographies and added additional questions that would help to also address what the governor's asking for in this executive order. So looking at community trust, looking at race-based issues. And so as I said in that first slide, we asked a wide range of questions from looking at quality of life, things like, do you find noise complaints to be a problem? Are you, do you feel safe in your neighborhood? This is an oversimplification of the questions that are there. But moving from there to looking at perceptions that community members may have of their police department, regardless of if they've had interaction with the police, it's important to know what their perception is. But then more specifically, the survey limits folks who have had interactions with police in the last 12 months to ask about those interactions. So it'll be interesting to compare those results on perceptions and then interactions and see what folks are coming up with and what they're saying have been their experiences. And then, you know, moving, looking at any areas that folks want to add to the survey and then finishing with the demographic information, which I think will also be important to look at in conjunction with the answers that are given.
Thank you so much for helping us with this survey. I'm really looking forward to hearing the results.
You're welcome. I am really pleased to be a part of it. I think that it's very important work and I think that chief and mayor have really been on the forefront of doing this work. And when you look at other neighboring counties who are not doing quite this in-depth of work in addressing the executive order, everyone is handling. work in, in addressing the executive order, they're, everyone is handling it in different ways, and so I really applaud them for doing such a comprehensive address, addressing of this executive order.
And Tom Michaels, did you have a hand up earlier?
I did, but she had a great job answering my question, so it's not me asking it now. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from counsel?
I had a question. I just wanted to ask a little bit about the reporting or the final product as far as the results of the survey goes, you know, what that might look like or what people might expect to see coming out of it as far as format. I know you don't know the results yet.
Right. So sure, the format, I plan to do twofold, so doing a quick grab, looking at, do a statistical analysis, all the pretty bars and charts that folks want to see for a quick read of the results, but then doing a more comprehensive narrative, which can be shared, I'm, I'm sure with you all, but especially with chief and mayor, in, in breaking down what those numbers tell us in conjunction with the qualitative portion where folks add their narrative, so what that's telling us. And then not only looking at the straight numbers, but having a more of a comprehensive read, so looking at the demographic information, for example, looking at, like I said, as at perceptions versus interactions and how folks are reporting on that. Those are some things that I think would be interesting to look at, but also really useful as they work to develop the larger report.
Sounds great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Looking, looking. Dr. Kanita Colville, I really do appreciate your time, not just this evening, but throughout this process. And we did have this conversation back in December, I understand, in particular, the timing. Here it is, it's your first year at SUNY Cortland and first year for anybody in a job. Usually there's a strong learning curve, and this is not a small or a simple task. I think everybody heard in terms of going through the IRB, et cetera, sending out additional postcards. You're volunteering to do this, and we're all greatly appreciative. Would you be comfortable just sharing a little bit of your specialty in terms of your background, what you've done or have been doing in terms of your specialty in teaching?
Yeah, so, thank you. I, I appreciate that. It's taken a lot of bribing of my family to be on board, the, the time commitment, but they, they are on board. We do very much believe in this work. And as I said before, I, I have been teaching for quite some time, most recently at the College of New Jersey, where I was jointly appointed in criminology and African-American studies. So my work looks at the collateral consequences of mass incarceration, more specifically in anti-gang policing, and I'm really interested in looking at how policing policies affect smaller communities, smaller cities, and more specifically in the Rust Belt area. So as we've seen industry pull out, what, what has happened to communities, more, more technology has come in specifically with policing and, and how that, that has affected both community members and officers. So my initial research was a four-year ethnography with an anti-gang program up in Syracuse, and I spent three years working with gang-labeled youth and then doing some ride-alongs with the Gang Violence Task Force in Syracuse and interviewing officers there as well. So that is what my larger body of work looks at. So I think that this research project fits in nicely with that work. It, it is something that is within my area of expertise, but also my, my interests, my, my nerd heaven, if you will.
Very good. Yeah, it, really, we're very fortunate that you've, we're in the right place in the right time, you know, your first year here, that you were able to do this, willing to do this, and your background and expertise is right in line. So this has been a very great thing for the city, so I can't thank you enough. I do have one more request, and that's if you can make me the host again.
Oh. You know, professor and only child, I'm not sure I can do that. All right, so how do I do that? Do you know?
The, okay, if you, I believe if you go onto my square and the three dots, click, and it should be make host.
Okay. There we go. All right.
I feel.
Thank you all very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And we appreciate your work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and we look forward, hopefully you'll be able to join us again when this is wrapped up and talk about the results and what that looks like. So thank you for your time this evening.
Anytime. Thank you.
Agenda item number two, and this is a little bit of housekeeping, consideration of a resolution to designate Lori Crompton and Tracy Hatfield as signatories on all accounts. We have a motion to consider. Katie Siliman, second. Bruce Titler, discussion. Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Carried. Number three, resolution to designate the Cortland Standard, the Shopper, and the Cortland Area Tribune as official newspapers for the City of Cortland. Motion to consider. Bill Carpenter, second. John Bennett, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Agenda item number four, consideration of resolution to designate the following bank depositories for city funds. We have NBT Bank, JP Morgan Chase Bank, MNT Bank, and the Tompkins Trust Company. Motion to consider. Bill Carpenter, second. Bruce Titler, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Number five, resolution authorizing the chief fiscal officer to sign an agreement on behalf of the City of Portland Common Council permitting the payment of additional costs regarded, required in reopening of section 384D of the Retirement and Social Security Law pursuant to chapter 264 of the laws of 2020 in amount of $13,600 in past service costs for a firefighter. Motion to consider. Troy Beckwith, second. Jackie Chapman, discussion. And this is an issue that we had some discussion about last year. My gosh, it was a couple of months ago. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Number six, resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with the town of Cortlandville, and the information is in the packet. And just to clarify, it is the Youth Bureau Agreement between the town of Cortlandville Regarding Services and Provision. So motion to consider. Troy Beckwith, second. Bill Carpenter, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
I'm sorry, was that Troy?
That's me.
John Bennett?
Yes.
Very good. Passes seven, one. And agenda item number seven, COVID-19 update, and the Abbott testing machines will kick that to just after this. So as, I don't think it is any surprise and everybody has been paying attention, we've seen the caseload has been hovering between 250 and slightly over 300 diagnosed positive cases in the community. And when, when I, I had a potential exposure, I was very public about it because I wanted, if there was a potential for me to have come in contact with anybody, that they would be able to know, because contact tracing is one thing, but sometimes it's hard to remember. Hey, did I have, who, who did I go and see Tuesday morning? What did I do Monday afternoon? Fortunately, the potential exposure that I had, had just had a test, and it was the Wednesday morning after the potential exposure. So I immediately started to isolate, self-quarantine, and did so for seven days, and then was able to go and have a test done. And I am still in quarantine, isolating at my house. I've learned a little bit more in the last couple of days about what that entails, not leaving the property whatsoever is part of the stipulations. But the path going forward, you know, as soon as I knew I had a potential, I took it very seriously and I encouraged others to do the same because I had felt healthy. I have not had any signs or any symptoms, and I know I am one of the most fortunate ones because I've talked to many people. Some of you may remember, last March, when I gave the state of the city, I mentioned about how my, my sister had been diagnosed with COVID and was very ill for several days back in March of 2020. So I know that I've been very fortunate, and in some ways it feels surreal, but the importance of protecting others made the holidays a little bit more difficult, but knowing that it was the right thing to do made it a lot easier to say, okay, I am in my home bedroom office right now, that has also been everything else for the last 14 days, and I am here through Friday night. Midnight Friday night is when I'm officially released from quarantine. So I share this story again because I want people to know, hey, if you have had an exposure, potential exposure, hey, the best thing to do, isolate, quarantine, keep track of who you've had contact with, really work to minimize potentially infecting others. And wait a couple of days to get the test. I was told that it should be seven days, so I waited the full seven days before having the test. And even though I didn't have signs or symptoms, having the test was important because I don't know what would have happened if I did not get the test and I did not have signs and symptoms. That would not have been the right step. And going forward, people who are quarantining, you're not alone. That right now, there's about 300, I believe it was 285, but let's just say we're averaging about 300 people a day who are in quarantine. And it can be a little bit challenging, but know that you're not alone and that what you are doing is for the greater good, that everybody else can benefit by you taking the appropriate steps. And I've been very heartened, the people have reached out to me. I appreciate the text messages, phone calls, emails, and I would encourage you, as you know, other people who end up being quarantined, be that neighbor, be kind, show some empathy and just say, hey, how are you doing? Do you need anything? And just check in. Maybe it's a, just a couple of positive words here and there, because this is a difficult time for us all, and having that empathy and showing one another that we care about our friends, our family, our neighbors, and even people that we may not know as well, that's what makes a community strong. And Cortland is a very strong community, and as we continue to work together through this, we're going to be in better shape. I've had some conversations with the county, and I believe that there is hopefully a press release coming soon because I'm under the impression that they've expanded testing, opportunity for people to get tested. I firmly believe that that is a crucial part of what has to happen for us to be able to keep the number of cases minimized. So anybody, if you've had a potential exposure, if you suspect a potential exposure, getting tested is the right thing to do. We've worked on improving what we are doing internally with testing for employees, and I'll announce that we are limiting access in terms of the city hall back to where we were in the summer. We've talked about, and we are finalizing a schedule where second-floor administrative personnel, call it split shift, where we are not in contact with one another. And it's a little bit of a strain because people are being asked to do some work from home, which anybody who has kids knows is next to impossible sometimes. We're also asking people to work some hours that are not traditional and might not be what they're used to, but our employees are dedicated public servants and are making the adjustments. And we ask the general public to bear with us, in particular, as we get into tax season, because the best thing in terms of paying, if you can mail the check, we can always follow up and make sure. But I know that there are some people that just aren't happy unless they can walk it in and hand it to somebody, and that is something that is not a good idea. Now, we're paying closely, paying attention closely to the numbers, and as I said, we're averaging close to 300 throughout our county. Physical contact, the more that we can reduce that, the better off we are. So we encourage people, and it doesn't matter if it's taxes, if it's something else that you need to address on the second or the main floor of city hall. We do have a drop box at the front of city hall, and we also have a mail slot, another drop box essentially, at the backside of city hall. And if the business that you are doing can best be managed without face-to-face contact, please do it that way. And I know this is a change, and some people are not going to be very comfortable with that. So we are still going to have the opportunity, if we need to, for people to see us face-to-face through the doors. However, in the interest of everyone's health, we're asking, again, let's really minimize the contact that we have with one another and even with city business. Testing. We've got two opportunities, and we'll talk about the Abbott machines in a second, but thankfully, we are to the point where with our relationship with SUNY Cortland, we've been looped in with Upstate Hospital. The testing that they've developed up there is a saliva swab, and we are getting geared up. And counsel, we appreciate the approval for some funds so we could do that with city employees. The saliva swab test that they are doing, and I announced this before, has been deemed the, I believe it's the best saliva test in the world, and sixth best in terms of all the tests that are out there. So it is a very effective test, and it allows us the opportunity to make sure that employees are healthy on a regular basis. Abbott machines, when the state was here back in October, these Abbott testing machines were the ones that they used for the testing. And the testing was done at three places outside the city, Marathon High School, I believe Homer Intermediate, and at Cortland High School. And we were fortunate that when the state, state left, they left some of the machines and some of the tests. So kudos to Chief Freeman and his department. We've had, they've been working on the ability to get those up and running, and we're hoping that that will be another method that we may be able to assist in terms of testing employees and then potentially others, but one step at a time. So we're taking these baby steps, and we keep moving forward, but it all starts with people remaining diligent. Before I talk about the Abbott machines further, can open up the floor, questions, comments, other thoughts in terms of what is happening, what we are doing locally with regard to Katie Siliman, and then John Bennett? And I need to move this document so I can see everybody.
I meant to bring it up during my ward report. I was contacted by a landlord who has properties in my ward, and he was wondering if there's any kind of relief for landlords. We have relief available for renters who aren't able to pay their rent. And if you need that information, Ray Parker was kind enough to provide contact information to all of the city council members, so please reach out to your city council member and we can get it to you. However, I wasn't aware of any kind of relief for landlords who are coming up short because suddenly they aren't getting the income that they've been counting on. So if anyone knows of any kind of assistance or relief for landlords, I'd appreciate hearing about it. I suggested, I wasn't sure, but I wondered if he might be able to apply for some of the small business funds if ever, if another relief package comes through, but that's all I could come up with. So I'd appreciate any brainstorms on the part of my fellow council members or anyone in the public for that matter.
I'll do a little bit of looking into it, and I thought, at HCR, I thought there was, there was some discussion about it at the federal level. I thought there is money, but I'm not sure how, how it's being delegated to the states and then what happens from there, so we'll look into it. But yeah, it is, it is causing, it is causing. But yeah, it is, it is causing, it is causing a strain for a lot of people. Katie, and then John, did you have a hand up?
Well, Katie mentioned one of the things I was going to mention. I will say this, I echo much of what the mayor said. People need to realize, yes, there's a vaccine, a couple vaccines, maybe more coming. It's obvious to all of us now, it's still a ways away. Do not let your guard down. You cannot do that. And I'm saying that because somebody in our household, there's only two of us. One of us is positive, so we're both having it quarantined. And we've been very, very diligent. Now, luckily, right now, there are no symptoms. Very mild symptoms, very much like a cold, very small cold. But as a couple who are on the northern side of their sixties, who both suffer from a dog edema, when you first hear the news, you do spend a day reckoning with it. Okay? I'll be very blunt. I was very nervous, I was very scared. Again, my wife and I suffer from a dog edema. At its full-blown strength, COVID attacks the lungs. Now again, we've been okay, and it's been seven days into it. So we're looking good. I will say this, the contact tracing has been wonderful. They contact us every single day, wanting to make sure that we're okay. I'm sure the mayor could concur with that. You all of a sudden start to think of things differently in life. Yeah, is it easy being stuck in a house, looking out the window? Well, you can get around it. You open the windows a little bit, because it's not five degrees outside, it's thirty degrees. I'm lucky, I have a treadmill. I walk on the treadmill. Work up a little bit of a sweat. Do the breathing that they recommend that you do. Stay active. My wife and I do not spend any time together. We kind of wave at one another. Wearing gloves inside all the time is not easy. But we have grandkids who love us, who are constantly taxing us. But again, my message to everybody out there is, do not ease up. It is still out there. However, whenever the vaccine to get here, it's still a ways away. So don't ease up, people. Please stay diligent, and I wish everybody to stay safe. Thank you.
Good. Thank you, John. So as information becomes more available regarding the vaccines, the state has put out basic criteria in terms of, I'll call them tiers, first phase, second phase, when people are going to be able to get, uh, the vaccine. And if you're like me, you've probably seen people posting on social media, healthcare workers, for example, who have had the opportunity. And the numbers that I've seen, uh, trying to get more, and it's not quick enough, it's not quick enough. Well, New York State is at the high end. I believe last I saw, we were probably getting more vaccinations out to people than any other state in the union. So when you have nineteen million people in the state, though, it's going to take some time. And it's not just nineteen million, there's two. So it's thirty-eight million shots, because it's a sequence. You have to have the first and then the second to be ninety, ninety-five percent effective. They're saying the one by itself is fifty or fifty-five percent effective. And, um, I'm more than happy to say that when it is my turn, I will get the vaccine. Because I know that there are people that are questioning it, and I understand that. I get that there's different thoughts and opinions. But I have confidence in terms of the healthcare system and what's happening, that this is the right thing, it'll be the right product, and it's the right thing to do. And I encourage others to make sure that they are thinking things through. Because, uh, if we don't have a critical mass getting the vaccine, then this could become an ongoing thing. Further discussion. So the, um, language, and Rick, tell me if I need to do this differently. But I'm going to ask council, uh, let me see here. Consideration of a resolution to allow, uh, mayor to sign an agreement with Cortland County regarding use of Abbott testing machines. Alright, I need language. I don't have it in front of me. You're muted, Rick, so if you can.
Given the emergency that existed, the mayor has already signed this agreement. So I'm asking that you ratify and authorize his signature, uh, going forward. Uh, and that it tracked, backtracked to the date of signing. It was truly an emergency situation, and we needed to move forward and didn't have time to get the council approval. So we're just simply asking for a ratification at this time.
So ratification, consideration of a, uh, consideration of a resolution to ratify the mayor's signature on a contract with Cortland County. Motion to consider. John Bennett, second, Bill Carpenter, discussion. For the record, there is no monetary exchange on this. This does not cost, uh, the city or her citizens anything. This is state equipment that is being loaned, passed through the county to us. And we are assuming responsibility for the equipment. Cat McCarthy?
What's the length of the agreement?
It is, uh, to the end of January, but can be extended if necessary.
Thanks.
Katie Silliman?
I would just like to acknowledge my, um, my gratitude for the agreement, especially at no cost, and for the cooperation between the city and the county that it represents. Thank you.
Bruce Titler?
Yeah, I think you mentioned this earlier in the evening. I just can't remember. Did, um, did you say that our folks would be administering this test essentially to, um, our employees? Is that what this is?
So the Abbott machine, uh, yes, our, so, so under, typically it's not allowed, but the governor has made it so that EMTs are capable of administering some of the tests. And fortunately, uh, our firefighters are also EMTs, which is why when there's slip, trip, fall, somebody gets hurt, they're responding, because they do have the ability to assess. And, um, we've worked very hard to, and are still figuring out how to do it efficiently and effectively on top of all the other duties. Uh, but they will be managing the in-house testing, meeting city employees.
So how many, this is what they did at the high school several weeks ago, I assume, right? That was actually a very quick, easy thing. We found out our results and attendance. How many of your machines will we be able to use? You have an idea? Does that still be worked out?
Uh, we've been loaned four of them officially, so.
Okay. Okay. Great. Okay. Thank you.
Rick?
I have to give a lot of credit to Chief Friedman and Captain Price for negotiating and developing the protocols for, uh, getting the Abbott machines and making this agreement happen. They really were heroes in my mind.
They're, they're great folks, great guys, great people. We have so many wonderful department heads. It's just, we're fortunate.
There's been a lot of time that's been put into this. Further discussion, I still, I think I do need to call for a vote, correct?
Yes.
Very good. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. Thank you. One more thing, I'd like to take a moment of silence, but I believe we have four, excuse me, two former city employees who recently have passed, uh, former police officers, Mike Maxwell, and I believe it was Bob Sanjul. And, uh, we appreciate their efforts when they're employees and the fact that, uh, they have passed on. We want to recognize their service to our community. So give them a moment of silence, please. Thank you, everyone. So I'd ask at this point, is there any further business to come before the council this evening? Tom Michaels?
I had my hand up earlier back when, uh, you were talking about, uh, COVID-19.
I'm sorry.
The question came to me, uh, in about, in the last week. Where, uh, what are the city's plans regarding, uh, when the vaccine does come, come about? Do we have anything in place regarding, uh, location, uh, personnel available? Are we, uh, going to piggyback on what, uh, what the county is going to be doing?
So I've, um, I've been asking, and I, I've got a little bit of information. Well, kudos, kudos to Jen Yartam at the Guthrie-Cortland Medical, because she did reach out to me back in December when, um, she knew that some of the hospital employees were getting vaccinated. She said, hey, this is coming, and good news. I, I'm under the impression that we may have at least two places that will be able to administer. But I cannot confirm any of that. Those conversations have not been had with city administration. But I promise you, I will, if necessary, inject myself into some of the conversations. Because we want to make sure people know. And I agree with you. I think, Tom, you and I are probably on the same page, that we can help amplify what's going on and make sure people know. And, uh, we want to help make sure that everybody has the information that they need. So I'm optimistic that this week, we're going to hear a little bit more about the opportunity for testing, for people in the community, in terms of the expansion of testing. And just as importantly, the vaccine rollout, and making sure that we are sharing that we're going to be good conduits of information for the general public. So the city, we don't have a formal role, but we sure as heck are working with everybody.
That's good. Thank you.
I'm sorry, sorry I missed your hand earlier.
No, that's alright. I kept raising it.
Good workout for you. Hit that arm up.
Fess it out, Derek.
Very good. Any further business to come before the council this evening? Well, don't want to get everybody's hopes up, because it's eight fifteen. You know, it's the first meeting of the year, and our first meeting, there's typically quite a bit of housekeeping. But I fully expect our meetings will be action-packed, because there's a lot of issues to address, a lot of work to be done. And, um, the people on council very much, as always, look forward to this year and working with you all. And continuing to provide our community the dedicated service that it deserves. So at this, I entertain a motion to adjourn. Cat McCarthy, do we have a second? Bill Carpenter, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ladies and gentlemen, we are adjourned. Thank you for your time and interest this evening, and stay safe.
Stay safe, folks. Stay safe.
Good evening.
Yes, thank you.